Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public Schools District website, and the posting of such notice at the Augustine Minor Administrative Offices and each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll call.
This is time to ready?
Here.
Mr. Byko? Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mr. Byko?
Here.
Mr. Little?
Here.
Mrs. Minnies?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Stella?
Here.
Mrs. Roddick? Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for Donna Montalbano, retired Middletown teacher who passed away in April. Mrs. Montalbano taught kindergarten and first grade and spent her entire career at Port Monmouth Elementary School. We extend our condolences to the Montalbano family. I pledge allegiance...
I pledge allegiance to America and to her republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the mic to public comment on agenda items only. Okay, seeing nobody come to the mic, I'll move on to the report of the superintendent.
Support of board of the agenda.
Yeah.
Support of board of the agenda.
There's no agenda.
Yes, we're looking for them. We know they were delivered here, so they're looking for them right now.
So we can return to that. There's no agenda.
Return to the public comment after you've read the agenda. Absolutely, I love it.
There's just, just to brief the audience, there's only one item on the voting meeting agenda for this evening. That is the approval of a change order for an HVAC contract. That's all that's being voted on this evening. The rest of the meeting is a workshop. So, under the report of the superintendent on the original agenda, there was an item for the approval of a memorandum of agreement that we were withdrawing for this evening. It's not ready to be voted on. It will like to be in the May 1st meeting.
Okay, moving on to facilities.
Under facilities, we just have one voting item this evening. The acceptance of a change order for HVAC upgrades with thermal piping. That is the contractor who's been working on the upgrades for our ESIP program. We have requesting a change order to address some heat pumps and unit ventilators at Thompson, H. George, or Middle Schools that were not included in the original scope of work. But since the contractor is on site and the work really needed to be done, we got pricing under the bid pricing that we received. It was better viewed by our architect and by our staff. We found it to be satisfactory. And so we are requesting a change order of $25,918 of VACs.
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. If you have your agendas, I'd like to open up the mic to agenda items only. Okay. Then I need a motion to adjourn the special voting meeting and open the pre-meeting workshop.
No. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, moving on to the presentation of the 2017 to 2018 New Jersey School Performance Report.
Good evening, how are you? My name is Jessica Shaw. I'm the Director of Staff Development and Special Projects in Middletown, obviously. We're going to take you through tonight some information regarding our... Oh, I get a mic.
You do.
Some information regarding our school performance report, which is tied to the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is a federal act. We receive federal monies. Every public school district in New Jersey is accountable to the sanctions under as a guidelines, and part of that is a performance summary. So we felt it would be in our best interest to give you some background information on how that performance summary is developed, prior to going into our own information from our recent performance in 2017-18. So, every school in New Jersey that receives federal money, as I said, is tied to an accountability performance summary. And as you can see up here, these are the components of what makes up that performance summary. We talk about academic achievement. We talk about student progress. And we talk about school quality. Every year, a school and the subgroups within that school have targets that they have to reach for academic achievement, graduation, student growth, and our quality measure in New Jersey, which is chronic absenteeism. Those targets are vetted from 2015, which was our baseline year, all the way through 2030. So, you know, some points to consider when you think about that information is that students that took the test in 2015-16, for instance, a third grader, by the time that final target of 80%, which is the threshold, the final target, is reached in 2030, those students will have graduated college. So when we start to think about targets, we also have to start to think about what students were speaking about and how that impacts that overall summative score that, you know, most recently was probably where you've all seen it, was published in newjersey.com as a news article. So, we wanted to give you some further information as to how those things are created, because it does give you a little bit more of a perspective about what that information truly means. So, this is an example of one kind of fictitious school that I wanted to show you that started with a performance threshold of 25% proficiency on the baseline year. They're tasked now with reaching 80% over the course of that 14-year period. Their targets, as you can see, they're kind of scoped out for you on the bottom, are very different than a school that might have performed to start in a higher place. So I have a second example that started at 70%. You can see their incremental growth looks different because they have much less of a deficit. So, in actuality, this situation could exist in a singular school. You could have a subgroup that had a baseline year of 70% and another subgroup which performed at a lower rate, for instance, the 25%, and they have various targets that they have to meet, which are going to be quite different based on that baseline year. So again, things to consider with target scores. They are unique to schools, content areas, and subgroups. Subgroups meaning, for instance, school-wide, white, economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, African-American. So they're distinct groups with common characteristics. In order to be considered a subgroup, you have to have 20 total students in the area that you're speaking about. The target score increments do not take into account different populations that move in and out of our schools during the course of a school year. For example, every year at an elementary school, we graduate a group into the middle school. So they incur that student population and their new testing data. However, the targets don't take that into consideration, which, you know, unfortunately is a flaw within their estate spending process for setting targets. However, it is giving us short-term goals with which to track our progress from year to year. So, when we look at that summative score, you know, the number that was published in the paper and the corresponding percentile rank, there are certain components that make that up. And each factor is weighted differently depending on the type of school you are. So, middle school and elementary school are weighted similarly to get their 100% total. If you take a look at the chart I have here, academic achievement in the two tested content areas, ELA and mathematics, they both count for 17.5% of that total summative score. And that is static achievement in time. So that's when you take the test and your actual proficiency rate. You then have your academic achievement in math and literacy. And for middle school, that's your SGP or your student growth percentile. It's the rate of growth that students achieve compared to themselves and peers like them year to year. That accounts for 25% in each content area. And it's refreshing to see that the state did give more credit to growth than to static achievement in time. The final component that makes up the middle and the elementary schools, and this is something that New Jersey self-selected because you can choose your school quality indicator and New Jersey voted on chronic absenteeism. And chronic absenteeism counts for 15% of that overall summative score. Each of these is weighted, and then it creates from that weighted, those weighted values, your summative raw score total. At the high school, there's one piece that changes. The two academic achievement factors are the same with the standardized assessment that takes place in the ELA and math. But then the difference lies in their growth factors. They don't have student growth percentiles. They rely on graduation rates. So they use the four-year graduation rate and the five-year graduation rate to count for 25% in each of those categories. New Jersey, by doing that, recognized that there are some students that need that extra year to complete coursework or to finish credit improvement to graduate. And usually what we see is students that don't need the four-year, do in fact, we recoup that data in the five-year. But there's always a lag on that information. And then finally, just like the elementary and middle schools, the school quality piece is chronic absenteeism, counting for 15% again. Again, it's weighted. It generates a summative raw score. And then that summative raw score is ranked. And that's where the percentile is derived from. So, I'm going to point out that article again because it was very misleading in the sense, and I'll get into a little more as to why, but number one, they rank order high schools and middle schools and elementary schools in the same list. And their factors, as you can see, are very different. It's also percentile ranked, and really, those summative score totals change year to year. So, you may be in a certain percentile one year, but yet you're in a different place the next year. But it's all relative to everyone's performance around you as well. So, the better comparison is a self-to-self comparison and comparison on your own school, subgroup, subgroups, and the district in totals growth from year to year. So that's what I'm going to show you at the end of this, how we did with those growth factors. Important to note, Mrs. Picas and I sat on a very early SL orientation meeting a couple of years ago when this was first put into effect and the state was applying to the federal government for their application. And they explicitly told us, these numbers, the summative score, raw score point total, and the corresponding percentile rank were never meant for a rank order. They were never intended to be used that way. They weren't designed that way. When you do that, you create misleading data information. They intended it, however, to be a self-to-self comparison for us to be able to track progress internally over the course of time by giving us short incremental targets that we could set goals towards and that we could monitor with some fidelity year after year using, you know, consistent measures. So, you know, we pulled this off of the internet. It was that newjersey.com article. And, you know, important to point out is right off the bat, if you take a look and you read this, I just went through the way that it's structured with the weightings of each of the areas. That information in this article to start is in you incorrect. So, you know, whenever I read a news article, I always look and say, you know, where's the source? This is incredible. Where did this information come from? You know, somebody took the information off the DOE's website, created a list without knowing any of these behind-the-scenes factors, and now we create a situation where we have a lot of skewed data, which presents a very different picture than what I'm going to share with you tonight. So, here's an example. And it's going to show you really the kind of trappings and why we shouldn't be looking at percentile ranks of schools. So these were two schools, both in Monmouth County, both middle schools, both very close to each other. Okay? If you can see, this is this year's data. I took this right from the website. Their percentile ranking is very close, within a point of each other. You then have their raw score total, which was used to generate that percentile ranking. Both very close again. Similar demographics. Their subgroups are very similar. They also have a similar total enrollment. So when you look at this, you might say to yourself, wow, these schools are performing comparatively, right? They're comparable. If we're comparing summative score total and rank order, right? So then, we say, all right, well, let's look at the other factors. Let's look at those self-to-self comparisons that I'm talking about. Same two schools. The school on the left, in not this past year's data, but the previous year, they had a summative raw score total of 61 accrued points out of 100. The next year, they had 55. They accrued less points, right? So they had a 10% decline in their point total. School B, on the other hand, they performed, you know, probably not where the school wanted to perform in the 16, 17 year with 23.51 points. But the next year, if you look, they more than doubled their point total with, you know, a positive outcome of 133% growth. Important to note is that the school on the right, it tells me that something is working in what that school is implementing on a regular basis because they're capturing so much growth over a very short period of time, where the other school stayed relatively static. So when you look at just percentiles and summative score totals, it doesn't tell the full picture of, are we implementing and are we doing things instructionally that are making a difference towards positive student growth and outcomes? And, you know, when we start to think of it that way, we think about all those factors and all those targets, and it gives us a more, a clearer picture of that self-to-self comparison.
I do feel inclined to note that the school on the right is one of our schools.
That is our school on the right. Thank you for saying that. And I'm not going to tell you who the other school is, but it's a school that is very highly regarded in the area. So I picked these purposely. So, this is another piece that I picked purposely. So I took the first schools listed from Monmouth County. I didn't put names up there, identifiers. But this is directly from that newjersey.com article because I wanted to paint a picture for you of, you know, how misleading that information can be. So these are all Monmouth County schools. I didn't choose any of the other schools from other areas. I picked just the first few Monmouth County schools that were on the list. Couple of things to note. First of all, as I said before, when we're comparing and putting people in a list for that summative score total and generating a rank order or a percentile rank, schools are banded by similar characteristics. For instance, high schools are not placed together with middle and elementary schools because if you think back to that previous slide, their factors are different. So high schools rely on graduation rates. Elementary and middle schools rely on student growth percentiles. So, they're putting apples and oranges together. We're trying to compare like things. So if you take a look further, most of the schools in the top 150 of that list, and I went, you know, I had another slide that we were looking at as well because I went all the way down to like 145 when I did this analysis. Look at the limited number of subgroups they have. You know, they're pulling on limited demographic diversity, which does make a difference because the more demographic diversity you put into the mix, the more targets you have to reach. So it does change the picture a little bit. Also, important to note, the last column is percentage of growth because I did do that analysis. I went back into 16, 17, and I kind of pulled out their summative score point total just to see like, how much are these schools at the top of those lists growing? And there's nothing earth-shattering there. They're all in, you know, low numbers, either plus or minus. So even though they don't have a lot of growth to capture, they aren't growing at particularly quick rates. And they're really remaining static. The last piece, which I think is super important, especially when we look at, you know, most of the top schools that were listed in that article are actually Monmouth County high schools. And there's an asterisk next to most of them because they are schools that have admissions requirement. So, they have a test to get in. There's a criteria. There's a requirement. And we're really talking about those vocational schools. So, yes, their scores are going to be greater. They're going to have limited subgroups and demographics. So, you know, this is an important picture because it really gives you a perspective on what that news article and that ranking was misconstruing for the public. And again, this is what I just went through. Important again to note is, you know, a rank order, the percentile ranking, or the summative score does not tell the story of growth for this year or for a school or for a subgroup. So, the big question is, what does Middletown look like, right? What does our data look like when we look at it from a growth perspective? In our diverse and comprehensive public school district, which I must say includes a variety of subgroups, we have pretty much every subgroup that you can imagine, which we should be really proud of because we do a really great job with a lot of diversity and a lot of moving parts. When you look at our average growth across our 17 schools for 16, 17 as compared to this 17, 18 cycle, our growth across the district was 7% increase. 7% in the positive. And that is, that shows us that we're doing the right things. We're moving in the right direction. You know, and there are some challenges and there are things that we do have to improve on and address, which we'll get to in a minute. But this is really positive for us, being as big as we are and as diverse as we are. And important to note too, we felt this was really important. You know, our summative score growth average was more than the number three school in that rank order list, which actually was the Monmouth County school. So, you know, when you look at it that way, we're doing a really good job. So, I talked earlier about target scores. So, for every subgroup in ELA, mathematics, there are targets. Those targets were vetted over 14 years that we have to meet. So, we felt it was important to show you the percentage of subgroup targets that the percentage of targets we're meeting in each of those areas across all 17 schools. And as you can see, the information here is very favorable. I do want to point out one thing because I don't want this data to be misleading to you. I want you to take a look at the graduation four-year rate. You'll see that it is less than what the others are. That does not mean that we're graduating 37% of our students. That means that our targets in that, because there is a baseline year for graduation, our baseline graduation rate was so high, it was in the 90s, that we now have to mimic that with every subgroup year after year. So we're graduating at a rate of high 80s and the 90s in the four-year rate. But our targets are so high that we're falling slightly short of meeting some of those targets, which we're going to start to look at because we want to address like, who are those kids in that four-year cohort? And where are they? And will they graduate in that five-year cohort? Because remember, we have a chance to recoup that data in the five-year cohort next year. And we're confident based on our five-year rate being so high that we are doing that. But remember, because there's a lag here with that data because it's four versus five-year information. So what are our areas of focus as we sit down as an administrative team, as an instructional staff, as a board of ed, as a community? What are some things that we are looking to plan for as our focuses for the remainder of this year into next year? First of all, mathematics achievement, which is our standardized testing in math. Our mathematics growth. You know, those were, when we look at the two content areas, those were lower. So certainly, we're going to be looking at the why behind that. You know, some subgroups are particularly challenging for us. Economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities seem to be two groups that, you know, we need to pay particular attention to. You know, our economically disadvantaged, we do have the opportunity to use P.O. one federal monies to help support instruction for those students. So that's something we'll be looking to do as well. And also, our chronic absenteeism as an indicator of school quality, we, I have to say, we have made great gains in that capacity. However, there are still some places that we're falling slightly short of what the state averages for that year for chronic absenteeism. Because that's an average, that's not a vetted target. It's a little different. However, our gains this year were excellent. Like, we basically moved very close to where we need to be. So we want to continue those efforts. And then again, like I said, the four-year graduation rate, we need to do a little dissecting of who those kids are and will they graduate in that five-year cohort and become positive pieces of data for us next year. So, some action steps, some things we've already done. The curriculum department has just finished sitting down with all 17 building principals, looking at this data critically, getting them to start to think about the steps they want to take in their own buildings in developing action plans. So we are having all 17 buildings and administrators develop action plans, you know, with the involvement of the stakeholders in their building. We are going to be also working with an increased focus on progress monitoring, especially using our Lincoln data platform to get formative assessment information into the hands of the teachers in a way that they can use it to inform instructional decisions at the classroom level. You know, we spent the last two years rolling in Lincoln and it's been very successful. We're now down to the place where we need to be in the classrooms and doing the work with the teachers because now we have a handle on the system. Now we know what it can do. We're versed in the functionality. Now it's time to put that data to work for us in the integrated capacity. We are going to be looking at our school improvement panels, which we are required to have by the state. But we want them to be more effective and take more of an active role in this formative assessment information and being very involved in the creation of those building goals and the carrying out of those building goals. We are looking, we are going to be, and actually are looking to advertise for this very soon, a math boot camp for fifth graders going into sixth grade. You know, obviously, math was an area of focus for us based on our information. And after speaking with a lot of our elementary principals and middle school principals, the jump from fifth to sixth grade in a lot of ways, but particularly in math is a big one. And we find that a lot of kids come in and they're lacking foundational skills that afford them to be, afford them the opportunity to be successful in those higher areas and application levels of math. So we felt, you know, we can do some type of boot camp or foundational remediation right before the start of the school year. We would put kids in a place where they felt more self-confident, coming in and tackling the challenges of middle school math. Continue, obviously, expansion of our math intervention program where we will be providing student support during the regular school day, working with our, you know, math specialists, our math coaches, our, you know, our district director of math, our director of math, and looking at, you know, the structures behind that and the strategies that we're using to help students that do have struggles in mathematics.
And I just want to point out and compliment that this list is just a brief list of the many action steps, items that our principals came to the meetings prepared with after reviewing their own data and talking to their staff and collaborating again with the directors of curriculum, such as Dr. Kerrigan and their interventionists and coaches and specialists. So it's that collaborative work of all of those individuals really analyzing the data and drilling down to see what are the needs, what are the current needs of our students and what can we do to improve how we're addressing them.
We're going to continue our emphasis on personalized learning, which dovetails with that intervention in all content areas. So, you know, part of personalization is giving students the opportunity to pursue things that they self-select as goals with guidance from, you know, the instructors and the specialists that are working with them on a regular basis. Continued work in using data in the classroom to foster student growth. Again, going back to the Lincoln bullet point, that system has been a game changer for us in a lot of ways of putting data, relevant, timely, actionable information in the hands of our teachers. You know, and again, identification of that four-year graduation cohort to identify where they are and will they graduate in that five-year cohort. Continuation of our attendance monitoring efforts. And then continue to encourage participation in our standardized assessments. We are moving to the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment this spring. Participation rate is a feature of the Accountability Report, but it does not factor into that summative score. But it's important, you know, for us to address areas that we might not be getting the highest participation rate that we possibly can. And we have grown incrementally in that regard. So we want to continue those efforts and encourage people to take the assessment seriously, to promote students doing their best work on those assessments. to take the assessment seriously, to promote students doing their best work on those assessments. Because even though it's one piece of data that we get, it is an important piece of information. It often serves as a starting point for our teachers to pull in other pieces as, you know, supporting or refuting information. So, that's all I have.
And I just want to compliment again, and I want to point out how collaboration is key. When it came to the chronic absenteeism, if you were here in December during our mid-year report out on our district goals, you know that Mrs. Walker and Mr. Rennella are working very hard with our building administrators to address chronic absenteeism in the district because it is so weighted, you know, so significantly in our school performance reports. And you saw Mr. Leone, for example, and Mr. Ferry address the fact that in their schools last year when they saw the data points, they knew they had to address that particular area in their, you know, unique schools. And the assistant principals at the high school level, as well as the middle school level, working every day to make sure that our students are present and available to learn because that's the first step. You have to be present and available to learn to actually acquire knowledge and close achievement gaps. So, we just want to thank the work of the Student Services Department in working with us collaboratively in those efforts.
Can we get to see those action plans?
Because you're talking about district, but you know, high schools are 30, 40 differential. One of them is 38, and a lot of schools. As you told, okay, 30 city, they own Henry Hudson. I mean, I get the ranking part of it, but that's a pretty low score. And you're talking about two high schools that seem to be pretty divergent, at least on here, and you're talking about our neighboring towns. Red Bank, Homedale, Bronson are all pretty high. So, are we have, is this going to be generic across the schools? Or are we going to acknowledge that there's, it seems like diversity in terms of the issues that are addressed? And I'd be interested to know what those plans are because talking about generically, that's not the story that's told by these schools.
Each school, well, we only, we only have one school that requires a formal action plan by the state.
That's the action plan you mentioned.
Yeah, I'm addressing. So, only one school requires a formal action plan. The others are not formal, so therefore they don't need to go through a vetting process. However, that does, that does mean that each school doesn't create one. And that's what the first meetings the last two weeks have resulted in. They are working on those action plans and we will review them as administrative team to make sure that they address the unique needs of each school. And that's why each principal had their own meeting to address the unique needs of each of their individual schools.
Thank you.
Can we ask questions?
So, this presentation was for the board members. I think if you could just save your comments till the public comment section, that would be great. Thank you. So, we have a couple of proclamations. A, we have the approval of proclamation of our Administrative Professionals Day. Wednesday, April 24th, 2019 has been designated as Administrative Professionals Day. And whereas, school and department administrative professionals are responsive to the well-being of students, professional personnel, support personnel, parents, and the community. And whereas, the Middletown Township Board of Education wishes to publicly recognize the contributions that school and department administrative professionals make to the educational process in our district. Now therefore be it resolved that the Middletown Township Board of Education hereby recognizes Wednesday, April 24th, 2019 as Administrative Professionals Day and expresses deep appreciation to the administrative professionals for their unselfish service to schools, departments, and the community. And proclamation B, approval of the proclamation for National School Principals' Day. Whereas, within an educational environment, the school principal is recognized as the instructional leader and a key factor in effective and productive learning in the classroom. And whereas, the principal's leadership skills and abilities directly affect the performance of teachers striving to achieve the goal of quality instruction for every student. And whereas, these professionals not only direct the activities within their school, but also act as a liaison between the school and the community it serves, ensuring that parents and taxpayers are aware of the school's undertakings and achievements. And whereas, Principals' Day is dedicated to recognizing significant contributions of Middletown Township Public School Principals to their schools and to the education of our youth. And therefore, the Middletown Township Board of Education do proclaim Wednesday, May 1st, 2019 as National School Principals' Day. Moving on to number 14, our committee reports. Start with technology, please.
Mrs. Walker, I was just going to ask respectfully, you know, Mr. Daniel there, and I was going to ask for facilities first so that he can be bright-eyed and detail-to-breed this crew at 5:45 AM.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, yes, absolutely.
If we could just do that piece first so that he can...
Okay. Obviously, being at 5:45, so come on up.
So, we have a few topics for informational purposes this evening for facilities. I'm going to skip out of order and go to number three, which is the cleaning cost analysis program. It's a program that we've been looking at to implement across the schools to improve the procedures and consistency of the work of the custodial staff. So, I have a hand on that. I'm going to let Walter speak about that.
Yes.
Okay. As Amy said, we're going to be introducing what we call the CAP program. It's through a company called Hillier. They're a chemical provider. And what they're going to do is give us a, give us some assistance. They're going to be coming into all of our buildings and evaluating the custodial section sizes, our existing program, our existing chemicals. And what they're going to do is bring them all to current industry standards to make sure that each custodian in each building is doing an equal-sized custodial section. They're going to be providing us with new chemicals and new techniques that we have not been using in the past that should increase our efficiency and, you know, lead to much cleaner buildings. Along with the program, they're also going to enable us to budget for custodial supplies and chemicals much better because they'll have the square footage of all the schools, they'll have the process that we're going to be using. So, we'll be able to really save some money in budgeting for the proper quantities of chemicals and supplies. And one other very important part of the process is they're going to be able to provide us some continuing education. Right now, our staff, they just aren't getting the education that they need throughout the year. So, now as, you know, professional development days occur for teachers, we're going to take some of those opportunities to train our custodial staff in the proper methods and, you know, and the new things that are coming out to make their jobs better and to make the schools cleaner. And we think that it'll also instill a new sense of pride in a lot of the, a lot of the staff because, you know, everyone, everyone likes to learn and, you know, and improve and make themselves better. And we think that this program is going to help them.
Do you know what the cost of this program is?
The cost should be no more expensive. This is just basically us switching a chemical provider. So, the chemical usage actually should decrease with this program. And this is a service that they provide free of charge along with their chemicals.
Right. And the products are available under the various purchasing cooperatives that we participate in, so they've been bid out by those cooperatives and you can obtain them there. The actual software and the program that Walter's been speaking about there is, that's not, there's no cost to the district for that.
Do we have information on the chemicals that they're looking to bring in? Have other districts used them? Have research ones in them?
We have, there's a couple of other districts close by that are utilizing this program. We hold, we hold it is Homedale. You know, and we've spoken to them and they've, you know, had good results. But they, you're not obligated either. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know, Walter, if you stress that. I mean, they, they set up a program and they show you how you could use their product, but you're not obligated to use their product. So, it's not something that we're committing to a certain amount or anything like that. But if we find the products to be beneficial and cost-effective, you know, we can utilize them.
Hillier is known as a very reputable company. You know, they have very high-quality products. So, we're not anticipating, you know, seeing a downgrade in the chemicals that we're using. All providers have, all chemical distributors have different levels of products. And we're currently using very good products and we expect to continue with that.
Is that the stock of the products that we have right now that we have?
Oh, yes, of course. We're not doing any sort of purging of products. I mean, any inventory that we have, continue to use. We're not going to discontinue anything.
What we're going to be doing is, you know, gradually just dispersing them throughout the district when, you know, we're anticipating by September having everything, you know, everything utilized. And in September, you know, when the school starts to really turn over and start the new program. One other really unique element with the program too is as it identifies the custodial sections, it will allow us to do random inspections over both sections. And it will, so that, it's not targeting any individual. It will ask the head custodian on a certain day to inspect classrooms 2, 4, 7, and 9. And then the next day, it could be different classrooms. And it goes through a punch list of things that they have to check and identify. And then it'll help everyone keep track of when a classroom was inspected, what the deficiencies were, what we've done to improve it, and it'll keep a record of that so that we know where our weak points are and where we, where we need to improve. And, you know, I think if we do that consistently, I think, you know, District Live will see, will see things really get to where we all want them to be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a couple of other items under facilities. We just wanted to update the board that we will, we will have some upcoming bids that we're working on and that will be awarded over the next few months. Their routine for facilities, fencing, masonry. We're also looking at asphalt, so those are things you'll see upcoming. We also are getting close to, we'll be, to advertising our bid for the High School North Auditorium Lighting and Sound Project that we've been working on over the past several months. There's been some back and forth with the architect and getting more information and surveying the space, but we do anticipate having that out soon. It definitely will be awarded in time to have the work take place over the summer months as we plan. Another item that we have on the agenda is, we haven't talked about this in some time and some of the new board members may not have been here when we had this report done. They, they aren't here when we had this report done. So, if you want to take one and pass it down. We just wanted to reintroduce the topic of our vacant properties that we have. The appraisal that we're handing around, some of you have already seen, some of you have not seen, was done back in 2016 in June, so it's almost three years old. But the values probably aren't changed significantly. But it just gives you an idea of the parcels that we have that do not have buildings on them. Now, some of the parcels that are listed here are being utilized for a field, so they wouldn't be things that we would be looking to put on the market anytime soon. But there are a couple of them that we are not using for any type of purpose that are a little more significant. If you go to page five, we have a parcel on King's Highway East and Sleepy Hollow Road, which is a 4.738 parcel. It's not adjacent to any of our buildings. So, it's just something to keep in mind as vacant and wooded. And at the time of this appraisal, it was appraised at $640,000. So, just to give you an idea of what the potential of that property would be worth. And also on page six, if you look at the top...
Mrs. Gallagher, did you say that could be used for a field, this one?
No, that one is not being used for fields. That's not adjacent to any of our school properties.
It could potentially, right, is that your reason it couldn't?
You know, again, it's not, some, you know, it's not adjacent to any properties. The appraiser said, you know, if we wanted to have the best market value for it, it would, it could possibly be used for residential development and sold that way. Again, they were looking at things that were not utilized at this point. We also have a parcel on State's Replace, which is not being utilized for anything as far as district activities go.
Is that the Fairview? Is that enough?
Yes, yes, right. So, the highest and best used was determined to be the development of five single-family lives if they were, if we ended up trying to market the property. That had an appraised value at the time of the appraisal of $625,000. There's other parcels listed on here with varying values, but they're, none of them are anywhere near those parcels. We have a few small pieces that range from maybe $3,000 or $4,000 to, you know, maybe $30,000. But the purpose of bringing this back up is a couple of reasons. One is to make the board aware that we do not have a large stockpile of properties to sell. Because there is a lot of talk sometimes about, why do you sell your property? Why don't you sell your property? And this is what we have, and not all of these are unutilized at this point. There are a few parcels that would be considered significant that we could consider if the board chose to market in the future. The way land is sold by a board would be, would be to advertise it. We have to take bids on it. We can set a minimum price and take bids on it and basically hold a public auction on it. But, you know, as we talk about our budget and the fact that we don't have sources of revenue that we used to, we're trying to find ways to finance particularly capital improvements, it's something to think about. We wanted to, you know, refresh your memories of the appraisal for those who haven't seen it, just like you don't have. So, that's all we're discussing at this point. This is how we look at it.
I have two questions.
Yes.
One question is worth, one question is for age of the... Do we have facilities maybe that I didn't totally?
No, this is, this is a report.
We're just having a report.
Yes, yes. We did not, this is part of the committee, the whole, because we did not need us to.
The other thing is, I would like to talk to the board as a whole. I think before you sell your land, you look at something where you maybe, once you sell it, it's gone. The money you got, it's gone. You can't get it back. You get it, you can't get it. Definitely not buying land. I think you look at some way to generate money off of the land so you can have revenue coming in. It might cost us money to do something, and I don't know what to say to do, but I would not sell your land. That's just my two cents there.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good point. That's why I asked about the fields. If we could use some of this land for fields, that would be great. If there's anything we could use it for. You know, again, this is just a point of discussion. It's certainly not meant to be something that we're deciding tonight. It really is just to bring it back up to the board. Obviously, no decisions are going to be made, but it's something that we should keep in mind as we go forward if we're looking for revenue sources or other things. Again, the parcels that we were talking about specifically are not adjacent to a school, so...
And perhaps something to bring up with the strategic planning professional, whoever that ends up being, in part of the long-range facility plan maybe.
You know, it's probably something you would decide as a board. But again, it could be just part of a continuing discussion, but we just wanted to highlight that.
Okay, thanks.
And then the last thing we have under facilities was the, we put in an application, actually, this due yesterday, for the Sustainable Jersey Environmental Defense Fund. EDF is called, and New Jersey Natural Gas, they have an EDF fellow program. And what that is, is you submit an application for a trade EDF fellow, which is typically an MBA or a similar type graduate that has in-depth training in energy product, project assessment development to come work on a trade in your district for about nine to 10 weeks in the summer, no charge, again, to the district. And they would come out and they would work with us and review our facilities and see the things that we've implemented. As you know, we recently implemented our ESIP and our solar PPA. And we've had various other energy saving initiatives implemented, so they can take a look at all those, review with us, even starting to look at the effectiveness, and also possibly come up with other things, particularly working with the, you know, we're tapping to the Clean Energy Program. we're tapping to the Clean Energy Program incentives, which we have available ourselves in the past, but, you know, this is a fellow actually sponsored by New Jersey Natural Gas and so forth, so we might make suggestions like, well, maybe you could upgrade this and we could, we work on this incentive and so forth. And we just, and they also would help us, we've been trying to get further with our certification under Sustainable Jersey for schools, only High School North right now is certified, and we would love to get more schools or even district-wide certifications, so this would also help us toward that. I just spoke into a couple of other districts who have had these fellows and they said they have found them to be helpful, and again, they're charged to the district, so we put in an application, we're not guaranteed, we'll see what happens, if we agree, we're going to say great, this is a great opportunity for seventeen schools, are really overwhelmed, so we'll see. So, that's all we have.
Hope you have that.
That's all we have under facilities, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we do finance?
No, but maybe we'll hold that, I just wanted to do for Mr. Carroll.
I just had another question under the property sale, I went through this, I didn't see that there is a price on the Linkcroft property, so the library-
The library, well, that had a building on it, so when we, at the time we did this appraisal, we only did, we only did parcels with no building, now some of them are fields, but if they had a building on it, we didn't do that, so we did not appraise that facility.
And if there was appraisal, would we be doing that?
We could, I mean-
Because it's a property that's only by the board.
Yeah, I mean, the only building to your point, is that we're not using as a school building, would be that, so, I mean, we could get that-
I'm just curious, I don't know.
No, we could get that appraised anytime.
Now, I'm worried it's worth.
Yeah, yeah, no, we can definitely do that, like, we just focused on the land at the time we did this.
Andrew, are these people that are in that item for the school of that sustainable Jersey, not the electric, not the electric gas that you're looking to do?
The fellowship program, you mean, are there many, are there a lot of districts applying? I don't know how many apply, the applications were due yesterday, so I don't know how many districts put in for that, but it, you know, was publicized amongst school districts, I had the feeling that there'd be a decent amount.
And you did say it was free, right?
It is free, zero cost.
No, because we got picked last time, they, like, we did serve, I'm just hoping that we do.
I mean, I don't know, this is, the first I heard about this program was this year, so I-
No, but there was other things that you've done where we-
Well, we've got, we've gotten incentives from, that we've applied for in relation to improvements that we've done, so this is-
This is great, no, listen, I hope we get it.
I hope we get it too.
This would be very good for us.
I hope we get it too.
Thank you.
We'll let you know.
Thank you. Moving on to technology.
Good evening, I just have two items for today's workshop. The first one is a projector interactive board replacement installation, we have scheduled installation of replacement failed and failing projector smart boards over spring break this year. We've had a number of boards fail since the start of the school year, so we're going to try to get them back up and running. Second item I have is our student summer internship, upon success of last year's summer internship, we will be offering a program again, once again, this summer. The internship will be open to all high school students, and we will, it'll be, again, a four-day, a four-hour day, five days a week for the course of the summer. Some of the tasks our interns will be completing while they work alongside our technology department, will be repairing, reassigning existing Chromebooks, create, setting up and deploying new Chromebooks, reimagining computer labs, they're going to have a large part of our Windows 10 district upgrade network completing this summer, and they'll also be assisting us with upgrading our inventory and maintaining other district equipment. Just like last year, they'll get a great knowledge of all different types of hardware and software, they'll get behind the scenes of what it takes to run a district network and how it works in general, and they'll be exposed to a lot of unfamiliar technologies and hopefully gain as much as our last group did. The application for internship is, will be posted online later this week, it'll be shared out via social media, it'll be shared out through guidance departments in some of our high schools, and it'll be open through April 29. Interviews for those internships will begin on May 1st, I don't know if you can help myself, I don't want to throw the questions.
Do the students that applied last year, do they automatically get tapped on, or is it just everybody has to comply and-
We have everyone comply every year.
There are limits to how many students you take?
We have a limit of eight.
Eight.
Yeah.
That's great, it was one of my highlights of last year's experience on the board.
It was, it was a nice experience for them as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to student services.
Good evening, we're going to be recommending eighteen students for home instruction, one student for added district placement, we also completed the RFP for related services interview, excuse me, interviews the past two days, we interviewed eleven companies, we're going to be meeting Ms. Gallagher, Ms. Walker to discuss the companies and the merits of each, from that point then we'll be doing reference checks. So we are going to table this recommendation until the May reorganization meeting to give us more time to make sure we can do the proper reference checks. We're also going to be requesting approvals with our ESY programs to be at New Monmouth for the elementary program and Bayshore for the secondary program, these are the same locations we did last year as well. We had Susan Talone of the Mental Health Association of Monmouth County, along with former Governor Cody today, present to our power professionals regarding suicide awareness and prevention, that this program was funded by the Codi Fund, which is dedicated to youth suicide prevention, is creating opportunities for power professionals to improve their practice and be a support for our students in the district. We have the strikeout autism program challenge this weekend at the softball game at High School North, that'll be from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, there'll be a number of different games going on. We also invited the board out for our Mental Health Service Behavioral Meeting on April 30th, I sent invitations about a week ago, that'll be from 9:30 to 12 o'clock at the Professional Development Room at the administrative offices. In regards to our CPAC minutes for the March 27th meeting, we discussed the semi-initiative to Medicaid, which a district was responsible to participate in, where we have to log services for related services, IEP meetings for those students that are Medicaid eligible, and we asked the Middletown Friends of Diverse learners to assist us in that and providing information to parents so that we can meet our benchmarks, which were scored upon by the department event. It's an opportunity to bring revenue into the district that's accounted for our P and our budget as well. There was a brief discussion regarding power professionals, that's been discussed a number of different times in the past couple of meetings. There was also discussion regarding restraining exclusion, and Middletown Friends of Different Learners asked that we consider relying policy, the new policy that was come up in the fall, that the district practices not to use exclusion rooms, which we don't have in the district. So that's something we're going to look at as a district at this point, we really haven't discussed it, but we will be reviewing it. There was this brief discussion regarding special education, the cost of special education litigation, and that was discussed that it's incorporated into all litigation, it's not broken up separately, and there was discussion regarding transition of students going from fifth grade to sixth, sixth grade, as well as eighth grade to ninth grade, and we talked about some of our practices and Middletown Friends of Different Learners talked about some of their concerns, but it becomes individual things, it's kind of private. Okay. We have the Area Six Special Olympics Track Meet, that's going to be May 11th at Long Branch High School, we're also going to be participating in a unified event, we're looking to participate in with the regional high school district, so we'll be bringing some of our students from High School South. We will be applying for a grant with the New Jersey Special Olympics for next year, looking to create unified clubs for three different seasons, we're going to be looking to do club soccer in the fall, club basketball, club cheerleading in the winter, and then a unified team for track in the spring, which will be competitive. So that's something that Mr. Carroll will be working on as well. Any questions?
Yeah, that's actually one of the one things I was going to ask you about, forming a new group for track and field, especially at the high school, because this seems to be a big interest.
Yes.
Yeah, so my question was, are we going to look at our special education?
Yes.
Or our Special Olympics group and maybe rearrange it better if we're getting a new-
Yeah, we're looking to do that, just while we'll be talking about something later on when it comes to different things in the contract, so I should be speaking with the board about that later.
And my other question is, I did attend the Mental Health seminar today, is there any way that that could be done for parents? Because watching those videos, a lot of that is, you know, they explain like things that you say to your kids that could put them in this distress or put them under stress, I, you know, I would like to see maybe us try to do something for the parents as a big program and get them here. I know we don't always get a big turnout, but this is something that is really, really needs to be addressed. And I thought it was pretty strong.
We talked about doing that through PIC, we had Miss Talone present at PIC, and one of the goals of the Lifeline program as well as the Mental Health Association is to provide a competent community, and that's something they tried a couple of years ago, so that's something we can revisit again with them, as far as building community capacity as well, so that's something they were interested in, the gentleman's name, his first name was Joe, when I knew Chris Tappel, who was one of our employees, they were behind it, they were looking to do that several years ago.
And I know we did it for PIC, but PIC is a representative from every school, I really believe the community needs to hear.
Okay, you know, I can just follow up, we did have a presentation-
He's only now.
We did have a presentation the other night from Lifelines at High School North, I think it was last Thursday night, where they had a presentation by the, it was the same night as the PIC meeting, and we had a number of parents that showed.
Yeah, what Susan told at PIC was that the individual schools are completely reviewed, this really would be beneficial to individual, you know, with, with parents out at their, their schools, and she has done presentations at some of the schools based on the interest of the parent information, I mean, of the parent group, and, you know, can continue to follow up on that.
Yeah, I just feel that some of the comments that she made, that, you know, maybe parents are saying things and you don't realize you're saying it, and what effect it really does have on your kids, I, I think that was a strong message, you know, I sit back there and I, you know, when you go different places, you hear parents say things to kids, and they don't mean any harm to them, but they don't know what's going through the child's head as you're saying it. And naturally, that's the damage, yeah.
Thank you. Onto curriculum.
Oh, I'll come here. Mrs. Caruso is going to give everyone a brief update on a very exciting TEDx talk that one of our students at Linkcroft Elementary is hosting based upon his Spark project, it's actually an outgrowth of his individualized personalized learning project, his Spark project.
I just want to tell you-
It is now, right? I just want to tell you that an event is going to be happening on May 30th at Linkcroft Elementary School. There's a little boy by the name of Max Oster, he's in the fifth grade there, and he took the initiative to apply to create his own TEDx event, you've all heard of TED Talks, people are correct, he's applied to create his own TED-like event at Linkcroft School, and his, his application was accepted in the board, and he's very excited, he's got three plans, I think he could plan a week with all the things he wants to do, it's got to be limited to two hours, he's got some 4:00, 6:00 o'clock that night, and have to get tickets ahead of time to attend. All right, that Jessica is going to put it up there in a minute, so you'll see what the advertisement looks like.
It's boring.
There is a second one.
Trying harder.
Okay. All right, you can see how it's pretty bright, yeah, it's, it's coming on. Anyway, the theme is changing the way we think about school, that's the theme he picked for his event, is some combination of videos and live speakers talking that night, so if you're interested, it doesn't cost anything, although you can pay money if you want to, if there's free tickets involved, there's a limit of 100, 22 are already gone, and it just, just opened up, you know, and it's on the TEDx website, so if you're interested, you know, please. His teacher, Mrs. Alpa, helped him do the application, she's helping him prepare for the event, as is Mrs. Morales, our Director of Technology, and the principal, Dan Hid Fifth Grade.
We'll, we'll repeat, so repeat the date and time, please.
It's on the thing, May 30th, which is the Thursday after Memorial Day, okay, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the Linkcroft, in the Linkcroft School all-purpose room.
It's a 6:08.
It's a 6:08.
Four to, is it 6:08?
It's a 6:08.
I'm sorry, I'm so used to things being 6:08, it's 4:00 to 6:00, it's, it's a, my apologies, thank you for catching that, it's 4:00 to 6:00, it'll be on the screen in a second, okay, it's definitely 4:00 to 6:00. Two hours.
Here's a trouble.
It's, it's not a big deal, it's just a little, but I wanted to show you what was blowing. One of the speakers that is arranged to come, his picture's on there, what he's doing, is a little boy who's six years old, I'll tell you ahead of time, because it's kind of taking a while to learn.
We're constantly seeing it, speaking it, here it comes.
Any day now.
I see it, I see it now.
If you read the black section from the Twitter feed on the right, as soon as it's bright enough to read, "A night of inspiration, collaboration, fun, and games on changing the way we think about school," that's how he's advertising it, and there's the date and time, I think if you scroll down just a little bit, perhaps, or be something below that?
It's coming. Here it is.
Yeah, there. There's a six-year-old little boy there who wanted to do some volunteering, and he was told he was too young, he said, yeah, so he created his own nonprofit group, so he's coming to talk about his, you know, he was initiated, so it's terrific, he's one of the speakers that night, so if you're interested, and you're, you're free that night, please come. Okay, you have to, you're taking ahead time, can't show up that night, take us, have to reserve ahead time, because there are parameters that the TED organization requires, and one of the means that he has to be ahead time is that can't let go behind the people, because there'll be some more discussion in this month. These tickets, yes, it's going to be on the Linkcroft website shortly, right now, the tickets are available through the TEDx to TED website, but they'll be on the Linkcroft website shortly, Mrs. Morales is going to be putting it up, this is, you can actually click on it from, you know, this TEDx page that I have there, so.
You can go, you can.
So, we're also going to post that link on the district website.
Hey, which first come, first served, tickets, okay? So, very excited, I'll call on tomorrow. Thank you.
Another great example of how our student Spark projects can change the world, here in Middletown, got to get that plugged in. On the agenda for May 1st, I keep wanting to say this month, but it's actually going to be May 1st, our April voting meeting, will be our curriculum committees, approvals and workshops, as well as the complete list of our district curriculum offerings, so that's our course offerings, K-12, that will be available to students for 2019-20 school year, as well as the complete list of our field, field trip destinations for 1920. As you know, each month sometimes we add those destinations, but that is what we will have so far for next year, there will be some overnight field trip requests for approval, there will be the annual renewals of some of our subscriptions, including Dreambox, Linkit, New Zella Pro, and Brain Prop, Brain Pop, and Brain Pop Junior. So those are annual renewals because of the cost, it exceeds a certain threshold, I mean, I'm not exactly sure about that number, I just know it requires, thank you, 40,000. So that is it for curriculum, and we have our next curriculum committee meeting-
May 6.
On May 6 at 4:30.
I have a question.
Okay.
Bob, and I had sent you an email the last time, 4:30 is absolutely not good enough for me, I work, I change my schedule to make these meetings, and 4:30 on a Monday is not good. I know your email said that there's too many people coming, that you couldn't do it later, well, we've had all these supervisors and everybody here at board meetings, and we've gotten that done, so why can't we change?
And last year, we always met, we always met 4:00, 4:30, last year on Mondays was kind of the consensus for what we always did, but this time in particular, isn't this when all the directors and supervisors come so often?
So why don't we just do it in a workshop then? Because it's not there, us are leaving us out of a curriculum meeting at 4:30 because we work, when all our meetings got changed because people did work. I changed my work schedule, so I'm free on Wednesdays, but I have to work on Mondays now.
Would you want me to change it to a Wednesday?
Well, we have board meetings.
Not every Wednesday.
Well, I, I would like the time changed, 4:30 is just too early, and it's not fair.
We can go back and discuss that, I mean, we just went with, honestly, I didn't, we just went with what we, the group had decided.
Yeah, I just kind of feel like we're being left out and we're being pushed out because we have job obligations.
But it was like that last year as well, so it's not, it's not something new.
But it's a different board, Pam, and you changed the meeting dates this year, so a lot of us changed our work schedules to, you know, to do that, and I'm not saying anything, we made it, we're making it work, but 4:30 afternoon is work time.
Yeah, we've always done it.
So you're, you're done work by then, we're not.
We've always done it 4:00, 4:30, and the only new person to that committee is Tom, who didn't have any conflicts.
I wasn't there much.
But you were on the committee and you were there.
And I wasn't in the meetings, I can't make 4:30.
But like we said, things changed this year.
Right, so we're going to consider other options, right? And then, yeah, we'll look into it, that's the point.
Maybe because there's so many presentations, maybe it should be done at the workshops so the whole board could see all those presentations, because I think John last year was-
And then, yeah, we'll look into it.
Maybe because there's so many presentations, maybe it should be done in a workshop so the whole board could see all those presentations. Because I think John last year was the one who said, you know, some of those presentations need to be done at board meeting. So if there is that much that night, maybe we shouldn't get a workshop meeting.
All these options can be discussed, right? That's all.
Certainly. I just want to caution everyone that that is the annual presentation of new curricular adoptions. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Salina Caruso, it can, it can be two plus hours. So to do it as a presentation, I just want to caution everyone to fit it into a board meeting. It, it is quite time consuming.
But we can look into different times.
Sure.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to policy. Oh no, sorry, finance.
Okay, we have a few items that will be on the board agenda for May 1st. We'll have our financial reports for the month of, oh, it's really our April voting meeting, so it'll be for the month of March. We'll have the approval and public hearing on our 1920 budget. Again, that's already been approved by the county. It was actually advertised in the paper last week. I forget what day, but it's already been in the paper advertised. And we will, you know, the, the actual form of the budget goes into the newspaper. And we will be having that public hearing on the 1st. We have a couple of things we know about so far. Photography services contract with WARS, a renewal of that. And then participation in a coordinated transportation with the Ed Services Commission of New Jersey. Again, that's for routes that we do out of district. And we, that's just one of the venues we use to get routes. We use MOAC, we use Superset, and we also use, but for each one, we have to do a resolution to approve it and it goes to the county and they approve it. And it's, it's a process for transportation. As far as information items for finance, we have, want to update the board on our upcoming proposals that we have in this area. We are currently working on getting, we have a five-year copier contract, I think we mentioned this to the board, which expires this year. We have put out a request for proposals from state contract vendors for a new five-year copier proposal. So those are due back April 30th. That's already been posted and we're getting inquiries about it, answering questions. But they'll be due back April 30th. At that time, when we get those proposals back, we will review them. We will ask questions if necessary and we will make a recommendation to the board on how to move forward for a new five-year contract. We're looking at different options for financing along with that. So all of these things will be reviewed and a recommendation will be made. We also advertise our staffing competitive contract, R and P, for the, the substitute services and for the parent professional services that we camped for, that we discussed. That, the responses for that are due back April 30th. And again, that is a competitive contract. We have posted that on the BOB portal. But it is not posted on the public website because we, what we posted on the website is the advertisement of the proposal. When someone is looking to get our R and P, we do want to record who's getting it so we know who to expect responses from. So that is not why it's not on the public portal. But it is, the notice was advertised for people to request that from us and we will send it as requested. That, again, is a competitive contracting process. So when those proposals are due back April 30th, we will then review them as an administrative team based upon the rubric that is in the, in the R and P. At that point, you know, according to the local contracts law, we then have to put together a report. The purchasing agent, which is, puts together a report based upon the evaluation that we've done and of all of the proposals that we received, we will then share that report with the board. And that report is also made available to the public at least 48 hours prior to the awarding of a contract. So that, it's similar that we do to the, to food service. And we also did, we did it also for the solar PPA, if anyone remembers. We had to publish that report as well. So that will be the process for that. Again, it's due back April 30th. So we are hoping to have that process completed so that we can have a recommendation for the May 22nd voting meeting. And that, that will progress and that will allow us to get things up and running for the next school year. We also have almost a final draft on our before and aftercare R and P that we've been talking about. We have not issued that yet, but we anticipate advertising it and issuing it within the next week. We are working on the, now that is not a competitive contract, so that is something that is not subject to the rules of making a formal report and publishing a report in 48 hours. It's simply a request for proposals. So we will be getting those proposals in. We are, have looked at having them due, sorry, I've got my notes here. Around May 10th, we're going to be advertising it before the spring break. And again, you know, they will be evaluated by the administrative team based upon the rubric that we put in here. We are going to be looking for what the different companies will propose. We have various scenarios and things that we're looking for as far as the fees that they will be charging and what their program will entail. But we are looking to get feedback from the firms. We're not, we're not being super specific on what we, you know, what type of program we want them to provide because we're looking to see what they're proposing to provide to us. And Mrs. Walker, I don't know if you want to add to that at all because Mrs. Walker's and we've all been working on the specifics of the before and aftercare R and P. I'm not sure if there's anything else you want to highlight.
Yeah, just, just that we did put specifics in of what we were expecting of the before and aftercare and the flexibility that we're looking for in the, you know, what parents can choose in terms of days they want to go and hours they want to go. Similar to what we have now in terms of that flexibility. And maybe a little expansion or a lot of expansion of what's offered during the, the hours that students are there. So that was pretty specific.
Amy, I know when we hired the YMCA to do before and aftercare, there was supposed to be a lot of curriculum and cultural things taking place. You don't really hear that any of that's taking place that we monitored that. Because I think that was part of their contract, what they were going to offer our kids.
I mean, I, I do believe it's monitored. Probably Dr. George can speak or Mrs. Walker could speak to that better than I could, but.
Yeah, and, and Mrs. Walker, you, you could speak to that. Well, first of all, we, what we've done differently is we've had meetings with them. We've asked for feet, so we can monitor that with exactly what is happening and making sure it's consistent with what the expectations are. We've done a series of things. For example, expanding the areas in which they actually are inhabiting in the building, working with that, working with principals, having conversations with principals. We, of, of what the expectations are and how the programs as they see it are working and they're the ones that are in the building most of the time. But that's part of, that's part of the non-specific work, to see, you know, what things really are out there and how we can, how we can expand upon that. And that's why we felt to that point that it's important just to make sure that we know what other providers may also be willing to offer us. You know, we did also have conversation, you know, we, we reviewed this process at parent information committee. What we heard back from them is, number one, that the cost is something that, you know, is important. But seeing what else is out there. We know from feedback that we've gotten from our parents in the past, making sure that we have a program in every school. There was a couple of schools early in the school year that it took us time to actually develop the program based on participation. Now, we offered that at neighboring schools and provided transportation until they were out. But those are some of the things, you know, that we've heard from our parents as well. So we've kind of taken into what we've heard in the past from our parents, what we've heard from our principals, the things that are really important, as Mrs. Walker talked about, like the flexibility of the program. Not that you have to be there five days a week, but that you can put different packages together, different days, those kind of things. But we all are also are looking, as you pointed out, to expand on maybe the programs that are offered during that as well. That's part of also our discussions about expanding the area in which we provide the program. So it's not just in the multipurpose room around the playground. We're really looking to expand upon that. And then with that, offer, see what those providers would offer us with additional programs as it relates to that. So that'll be part of that process.
Yeah, because I know at one time, a lot of parents were looking for help with their, their students to get their homework done because once they get home, there's no family time. You know, and, and when they first advertised, the cultural events that they said they were going to have were really interesting. And then they helped, helped the fitness program they also said they were going to offer. You never really hear anything about that.
They are doing, they're doing the Healthy You Catch program. They're doing that. They're doing some other programs that are additions to the, the Y aftercare, the Y aftercare students can participate in, as well as the other students of the school while they're there. You know, it's, it's kind of a balance because you have some parents who just want their students to relax and enjoy the time after school. And then you have the other parents that expect the homework to be done when they come home. So they try to do a blend of that, you know, some time for relaxation, some time for the, the extra help and homework. It is a balancing act because you can't please everybody that they're trying to do, to do that. But this is why we, we are creating this competitive, you know, working here. So that we, we can get the best programs for our students, you know, at, at the most reasonable price.
We've also attempted to survey our parents and then share the surveys with us. And they've done that and give us more data points as it relates to that. So that's been part of our follow-up meetings as well.
Do you know if we still have our high school students going Sunday's?
Yes, they are, they are.
We're actually also, for those interested in becoming teachers in the future, trying to get them to apply actually to employees of the program. They can't do the morning, they can't do before because they're in school time. But they can do, and we have had students that are actually employed by the program.
They went and recruited in, in the school for a long time.
And they're like rock stars in the program.
You know, it's the kind of things we don't really hear a lot about. And that strikes me because I know when we first hired them, that was things that were catching the parents' attention. And, I mean, our proposals were very well attended. So the more we can offer our kids, the better.
I mean, I guess the average school's different, but that hasn't been my experience of the line. I mean, follow each school, but those programs, I haven't seen it. I, I'm not telling you right now, I'm not, it's a smaller school, so maybe you don't get that. That, that is not being, any of that at all.
The surveys will let us know that, yeah. Supposedly they are, they're being, taking place.
Another, one more reason to really take a good look at their program, reflectively, look at the providers and look what our programs can provide for us.
I wonder if, if we'll be introduced to the process three months in? Because you don't know how many responses we have for aftercare. And it's open, so how's the board, I mean, we talked about it earlier today. How, how, we have a board that's seeing when, so we have experience with it.
Well, we will, once we finalize the R and P, we can post that through the board portal. And then, once the responses are back and we review it as an administrative team and come up with our recommendations, you know, we will certainly discuss and share our recommendations with the board. And we'll, we'll, we'll.
We'll post them to the other board meetings. They might be very different. So how do you, you get like 25? Are you going to say, well, here's a top five? Who are you looking for? They're the worst argumentation to receive with the services. And they can vary if you're dealing with both these.
Right, well, I mean, not, not totally, but we don't know how many responses we get, obviously. We were, we were planning to show the board the top responses that we, that we saw on what our recommendation would be. It depends if we get 25, probably we go for 25 with the board. But if you only receive a few, then you probably will. You do the one with the board because if it's only two or three, then we get, then we do that.
I don't think there's that many.
I don't anticipate getting 25. I think you're probably right, there'll be less than five.
And then would you, then it would be our intention?
It would be in the moment, we'll post them on the board.
Yes, we can see some of your responses and what our recommendations are.
Same, the other R and P, I apologize, you said you were going to post that in terms of the services, like for.
Which one?
What are you calling it?
The staffing. I, we posted the advertisement for it, but it's posted in the board portal.
It is.
It's posted in the board portal, but we're not posting it on the public website.
No, it's good.
Because anyone's wants to.
So we all have it.
You all have it, yes. And the, and the before and aftercare will be posted in my spot on my stuff like that. So we'll be forward.
And that one will be the staffing. You will just give us your recommendation, right? That won't be one of your, or your committee.
No, we'll validate that administratively, but under competitive contracting requirements, we have to actually write the report. So we'll write the report and that we share with the board. And the report gets shared with the public also. But it's posted on the website.
Does the report contain?
What's that?
Does the report contain?
The report, the report will contain how that the, yes, how the, it'll contain each respondent and how they store the rubric.
Oh, how each respondent?
Yes, it'll be similar. If you take a look at the one we did for the solar PPA and for food service, it'll be similar format to those.
I have a question. Before we vote on the final budget, is there any way that we could get a copy of what's actually in the budget each, each department? Because as the, the calendar, as the agendas come out through the year, we see new things being added. You don't know if that was in the budgeted or if that was money that was left, you know, leftover that we could spend. I'm just curious. I'd like to see, like, we're saying we're cutting 24 staff members and we know how that's going. But in each line item, how much money you don't, what is allocated for? I guess that's what I'm looking for, the allocation of the money.
Well, we did present allocations of the budget areas with each part of the presentation that we presented. So, you know, we did go through each area.
Was it like itemized, like, you know, what the, what the dollars are being spent on? We know, like, say athletics has a lump sum of money. But what can you put in that lump sum of money? How did you come up to that lump sum of money?
Well, I mean, it, it's broken down into individual budget accounts, right, that make up athletics.
I'm just using that as an example.
Right, right. I mean, if you want some other level of detail besides what was already presented in the budget presentations, you can certainly, they can certainly, so what we're looking for and, you know, if we can provide any information that we're looking for.
I'm looking to know exactly what's in there so that when people come up and you say something's cut, we don't, I don't think we really know. People might come to the mic and say, hey, you know what? We didn't get this this year, but we had it last year. Why is it cut? We don't know what's cut. You know, we know dollar amounts going to each area, but we don't know what the dollars are being spent exactly on.
Again, if you want, you know, I can certainly, if you want to come by office, I can show you, you know, any types of reports that we have. We did, you know, we do, I mean, it's out of, right, we do. I mean, we can certainly review that. But again, you know, I, and I just want to reiterate, on behalf of the team, we do make the plan for the budget. Sometimes things do, you know, change in the, you know, like 16 months between when we do the budget and when the budget ends. And so there, we do have our plan and I'm not saying we don't stick to the plan. But sometimes, you know, we do have to make changes in March, so the plan would be in previous March because of changes in priorities. But we certainly, to answer your question, yeah, I mean, if anybody wants any more information on the budget for the final vote, please.
And I'm assuming that we're looking at the budget we're working on right now and trying to save some of the money that we didn't spend, put into capital reserve?
We, we do that, but I mean, I will tell you the budget's very tight for the current year. I'm not sure that that's going to materialize. We do try to, you know, we, we do issue routinely a sort of, I don't want to say a complete moratorium because you can't stop all purposes there. But we do tell all the departments and schools in January, early February, you know, please project out what you need till June 30th at this point in time so that we know what the expenses are going to be. And we want to get those in. We want at least get the money in converts, you know, what's been accounted for. But again, sometimes things exceed what you estimate. Sometimes you do save, but I mean, as a general, as a general overall picture, you know, there's, you know, we are running pretty tight.
And yes, that's my point.
But that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to, anywhere we can save from the original plan to. original plan, some of the money aside, that's what we're trying to do.
And I guess that's my point because we have lost a lot of money. And if we really don't need the stuff that people budgeted for, we should take that money and hold on to it.
Well, we do.
So that we can use it for.
We do as much as we can.
I know you do.
Two things to that that are really important that we said. We, throughout our budget presentations, and again, I think this year was a great process because, you know, the public was able to hear these discussions. We made it very clear within a year per session how surplus went down, number one, and how much we cut out of our budget to get to 2%. So, and the fact that last year, at the end of the year, we had no surplus. So, you know, it's very important that we made it very clear that, that we didn't anticipate the ability for much flexibility there, although we always look for it because every dollar counts and it's important and I agree, and I understand why you're asking the question. And, you know, the last, the last point about that is that, you know, that's why we think it's really important to make sure that we stay within the fiscal accountability guidelines because the body of work over this eight-year period is very clear that every year there gets less and less of flexibility within that process.
And I know you do try every year, I just wanted to.
So again, anybody who feels that they have a question on something, any more information before May 1st, you know, clues up, so we'll be happy to.
And after May 1st, if things come up, board members are welcome to come to you and ask if they have questions from the public. You know, so-and-so had this last year, but they don't have that this year, you know, did it get cut from the budget? Can you tell us?
I mean, if I'm not there until September when it's cool starts, that's.
Well, and we also, you know, as far as the buildings go, you know, the principals are the ultimate stewards of their budgets. I mean, we approve everything that they purchase, but they, they make, you know, the decisions at the local, local or the school level. So staff and so forth would be, I mean, just the first place that they'd go to, ask questions about it, right, their principal.
Okay, thank you.
That's all we have for comments.
Thank you. Moving on to policy.
We just have second readings on policies that were introduced last month. There are several policies here and we haven't had any additional changes to them. So unless there's any questions on those.
I think, yeah, they could follow up some of these firearms, senses, like, one year, so that, and then if someone pulls a gun or a knife on a teacher, I think he's a used to go look up what the state, value is.
The 5611.
Yeah, there's three of them, it's like one to pull a knife, one to pull a gun. It's surprising that you don't mention a year. He was going to look into.
I, I didn't speak to him, but I went to the leaders of the statute and that is actually the exact wording from the statute.
Right.
So, you know, it's what the statute specifies. Now, I don't know whether we can say, you know, do that.
Have you been located whether that was just the minimum of, or?
Well, there is, there is a minimum. What it said is there's a minimum of a year, but the superintendent can recommend less than that, but they have, the superintendent actually has to make a report to the state of the reason why. I get that in the statute.
Well, if they pull a gun, it has a good reason.
So.
I just wanted to, we can make a policy script, I think we should, considering we don't have any law security.
So this is what we're saying, that if it's going to be scripted and it's in the statute, then you have the right to the state?
No, no, the wording is exactly what the statute said, but it goes on to say that if the superintendent does make a recommendation to, you know, make the, whatever, the suspension, non-suspension, but, you know, keep the student out of school for more, less than a year, that has to be reported to the state and there has to be a report of the reason why that recommendation is being made. So the minimum amount to stay out is one year. One year or more is what the law requires, except the superintendent can make a recommendation toward less, but has to report to the state certain information in a report as to why that recommendation is being made. You know, so I really, you know, I don't know what type of circumstance that would be in. We've never had to do this with a student, you know, to, to, we just haven't had that issue. But I would guess if the board wanted to eliminate that, I don't know, unless you're going to say whether you could or not, I just know I went to the statute and saw that it was exactly the same in there with that if they were to.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, in terms of pulling levers or whatever, in terms of start with your hour.
That's what we did, I mean, I mean, that's what we would do. I mean, we've had students with a lot lesser interactions that we've put at school for the rest of their school career.
I think we can have Mr. Taylor next meeting, number one. And number two, I agree with you from that patience standpoint, number one, first thing, student safety, student safety, student safety, safety all the time. We would never make a recommendation, I would never make a recommendation like that without a legal opinion as well as an informed board and a position from the board. So, you know, I think we have to be careful about individuals' civil rights, but that's a very important piece, but I don't want to speak about something that's, I always tell Mr. Taylor, I'm the worst attorney I know because I'm not an attorney, so I'll put him on that.
This will, I just want to make sure I understand, you're more interested in knowing how to make it longer than a year because it's, you know, it says a year.
Yeah, it says basically.
And it says a year.
Yeah.
A big year. So that the notion of expulsion.
Or whatever.
Yeah, is sort of a, is normal because the law requires every student to have free and public, read appropriate public education. So even if they're put out of the school, as long as they're 18 or 21, if it's special ed, this district has to provide some sort of educational service for the students. So the idea of expulsion to be a true concept as we think it is. So even if the student is not in the building, is the district has to.
Right, I'm talking about scaring them out of the building. Probably prison, but.
Attention.
Yeah, I just wanted to think about, you know, if you don't have laws of policy, that's all, that's all that's, I appreciate that.
Okay. And if you could get that information to us before the board, email or something that would be helpful to the board members, I think, right?
So you don't want to handle it longer than a year?
Yeah, and if that's, you know.
Again, I just, I want to reiterate that those are paid handles, on these basis as individuals within their civil rights and it doesn't, it may be in the best interest of that individual student or in the best interest of, once we deem someone is a harm to their self or others, it doesn't have to rise to the level of weapon in school for us to find a more appropriate placement. So that's nothing different than what we do at this, you know, I just want to make that clear. And I think it's really important to keep in mind the civil rights issues.
It's so, it's so true. And I just want to be cautious with the board, you know, the zero, everybody knows the zero tolerance and it ran into unintended consequences. So having these really strict sort of blanket rules really is ineffective and it's better to do it on a case-by-case basis because certain things are always different.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Cowherd, a question. Policy 8461, is that a mandatory policy? I've seen it through the eyes.
I'll let Ms. Walker talk about it, but it is. Yes, it's mandatory. And we had the policy. The policy really didn't change. What changed is the platform that we report these incidents to. The state used to be called the EDDRS, the Electronic Violence and Vandalism Reporting System, and now it's called the SSDS. It's a different platform that we go through, a different website that we report all these things on. So what this policy did, the change is that we changed EDDRS to SSDS, just that reporting. So, but the main idea of the policy is exactly the same as it was. There's really no change. We've had this policy for a while.
Okay, so if you wanted to take a look at this policy, if you want to make a line of adjustment or change, or just change. Can you do that through a statement in the policy?
Well, so long as we keep the requirements of the policy in there, yes, there are probably things that you could add to it or tinker with. But the recording, this is about recording and it's telling us exactly, this policy probably must go than others because it's talking about what is, like, this is what we do, like, somebody, a student does something in the building and the principal falls out because they have to categorize it. They're like, is this a fight or is this a assault? What a specific criteria it has to meet to be considered as assault. Your specific criteria it has to meet to be a fight. So we go through that. Is this, is this a that? Is this a that? And that's what this is talking about, how we report those incidents. It's not how we discipline, it's just how we report the incidents. How many times a year, how many times we report out on the incidents to, you know, to the board, to the public. That's what the policy's about. But you, we can always tinkle with it. Like, it says that we are required to report out twice a year to the board. The board could decide they want it to be poured out three times. The reason for it twice is because we actually report it two different, yeah, two times a year. We do the first half of the year and then we report the second half of the year. So that's why the state says report it out twice. But, you know, we can always add something to it.
Thank you. Student activities?
Student activities. All right. We have a sidebar agreement with the MTEA on this agenda. The sidebar agreement is for, Mr. Dunn talked about the unified sports that were going to be added. So it's a coach for each season for the unified sports. We already have basketball, which is intramural, and we have an intramural stipend for a coach for lab. We've had that for years. But since we're going to be adding, we're adding the soccer, the soccer, we're adding, we're soccer track and cheerleading.
Soccer, basketball, cheerleading.
And cheerleading. Well, we already have basketball and track, yes. We have to add three. But we can't call them, they can't use the intramural stipend that's listed in the contract, the MTA contract, because technically we are going to be competing with other schools, not just with our own school. The basketball just does with our own. So, so we have to add stipends. It'll be the exact stipend amount as the intramural coach. It's about $1,800 for step one. So we'll have three coaches, one for each season. We're also adding the volleyball head coaches, a boy and a girl coach at high school north and south. As, you spoke about the volleyball in Middletown contract?
Not yet.
Oh, you haven't talked about it? Oh, okay. Ms. Cowherd is going to be talking about the volleyball in Middletown contract, which volleyball in Middletown organization, them, is responsible for all the costs. So we still have to negotiate and have a sidebar agreement with the MTEA, but we will be reimbursed by them for any cost of these, these coaches.
As we deal with across Middletown.
Yeah, exactly.
Eventually that will fall off.
Maybe, maybe not. We, you know, if it's not a successful, you know, if we don't have the things, or if we can't afford it. I mean, right now, we actually even talked about next year giving them a budget and everything. So there's no expectation that we're paying for this.
Right, I mean, I'll just roll right and give you the discussion of that contract. We will have that contract on the agenda for the board to approve at the next meeting. We have been meeting with volleyball in Middletown over the past several months to develop a framework that they could bring this to Middletown as a sport. So working with Mr. Carroll, our athletic director, and all of us, to help them put together a budget and structure a contract. We have shared, grabbed contracts with them to review and they are okay with it. Basically, the financial terms of it are, the total budget for next year is anticipated to be $61,911. But add to that, $13,602 represents the equipment and supplies that they have purchased already for the teams and that they will be giving to the district. So they are required to give us proof of the ownership of that equipment. A lot of it we have announced already by May 2nd. Then they will be obligated to provide the board with two payments for the rest of that budget on May 9th of this year, which is $25,051. And on November 11th, $23,258. It's split up because they do run a fall and spring season. And the boys and girls is separate season. I don't remember who's in the fall, who's in the spring. Anyway, they run, and so, you know, before we hire the coaches, that's why we're looking at getting monies from them in May before we hire the fall coaches. And then before we hire the spring coaches, we would need their payment of $25,058. It also provides framework for negotiating the next year's contract, you know, before the end of, you know, our next school year. And makes it clear, one important thing is we highlight or we detail in the contract that they are responsible for their transportation. We will not be contracting transportation for them, but we also will not be collecting money for that either. And they were actually happy with that because it is costly, as we've been discussing. So they will not have to fundraise for that, but we are not obligated to provide, us even require our own transportation. So that's specified in the contract.
I have two questions. First of all, how many of those schools are going to be able to participate in games?
I don't know exactly.
I don't know the exact number, but quite a few. There's quite a few. There's not going to be, there's not going to be a problem getting schedules together.
And this will only be at varsity level teams?
Okay. And then, we're not going to provide transportation, not these kids getting it?
They're going to have to carpool or, you know, they're going to have to, the organization was fine with that.
We did have a hockey also, we did not provide us.
We normally don't.
What's the liability, though?
There is, I mean, that's, you know, private transportation.
What is those $61,000 for?
Well, the, the $13,602 is also the equipment supplies, the rest of it is for the coaching stipends and also the set uniforms. You're going to be buying the uniforms, they're going to be buying supplies at this ball, something like that. But we're buying the uniforms and providing the coaches' stipends, we're hiring the coaches.
Are we either practicing?
We're practicing here at high school.
High school north?
And south, yeah. There'll be, there'll be teams at all schools, boys and girls. So there's four teams all together at the varsity level.
And there's a parent information session on this, right?
South?
It's happening, right?
It did happen. It's happening very soon, right?
I have another question. I'm not complaining about play, we're getting volleyball. That seems so high. I, I'm going back to when Buddy was here. He used to say that was going to be the cheapest sport we had.
Well, my, the majority of the, majority of the budget will be the, you know, they're going to have four teams and they have coaching for four teams. So, and that, the stipends for those, and they're running two seasons, they're running fall and spring.
Do you need four coaches that get overlapped, coaches or anything like that?
Well, they'll get paid for each season. You know, there'll be a fall coach and a spring coach, boys and girls.
I just thought it was going to be less. I'm glad we gave you, it's about time that we do this.
And there's a question-answer session for parents Monday at 6:30 PM at High School South, for anybody who's interested.
I mean, it is, you know, it, working with the, it is cheaper than the hockey and the prom.
Oh, I know hockey, yeah.
And I.
I, I.
But I mean, as far as the ones that started as the group, you know, I mean, hockey, of course, with the Red Bull, the ice facilities and so forth, that's.
It's exciting. It's about time for these kids. That's going to be a good sport.
All right, I have one more item that's not missed, it just came in. There's also going to be a research project on the agenda for approval. Wendy Morales, who's our supervisor of digital media arts and technology, K-12, is going to conduct a research study on the impact of professional development on teachers of grades three to five students, on the teacher's knowledge, perception, and implementation of global citizen education. So it's, there's a couple of surveys teachers will do and then there'll be some PDA, but it's all voluntary for the students. and then there'll be some PDs. It's all voluntary for the students. Other than teachers.
PD after school? Mary Ann, is the PD, does she have the after school?
Oh, yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay, moving on to shared services, just quickly. We had a meeting on Monday. It was a very short agenda. We asked for an update on the baby fields. And what's happened now is that they are no longer, the township is no longer going to be looking at the baby field to do that work because there's not enough room to build and obstruction from the people's homes to the field. There's not enough room to plant trees, high enough to obstruct. And they're concerned about potential complaints from residents. So they're looking into other options and they're going to.
And they do now. Yeah.
There's been no trees there since I've been living.
That's, that was the, that was what happened, what we were told in the meeting. So, I'm, you know, and if there are other reasons, I'm sure we'll find out at the next township committee meeting.
I, I'm sorry, just one of them, Mrs. Ryan, was they were also talking about that that there are currently no lights there. So they were looking also, you know, if they had to use lights there, that would be a big change.
Yeah, because there's always been.
Right, but with, with the, with the fields being surrounded by a residential neighborhood and then if they were gonna have to use lights there, that would be, you know, significant.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah. Also, we talked.
I'm sorry, I cut off that.
No, it's fine. So I actually live there. I'm one of the property owners that wants the house right by the field there. In fact, actually, I can go up my fence and cut across the field to get my son to school.
I hope you don't do that.
No. And so I can tell you that even now, you know, there's a lot of activity that goes on with BYUAA, which is great. But I think there is a concern from everybody that lives, you know, on that street and then also the other side, that if these fields were actually built in the capacity I think that the township was looking for, that was gonna be a huge influx of more kids coming in, playing games, and lasting longer throughout the day. As you know, obviously, I kept bringing up too, the fact that the drainage issue is getting worse and worse back there. And if they're gonna put, you know, a lot of money into those fields, that, I think, was also gonna be a costly issue to try and solve over there too. But, you know, depending, I guess, on the lighting and how long these games are gonna go, if this is really, you know, more travel soccer teams coming in, that's gonna last longer throughout the day, I mean, could present an issue. So, I can say that some of them is.
Yeah, so maybe a good thing that we're looking into other options, yeah.
It's just too bad because the plan that we talked about, if they knew more parking in front and it really supported the school population.
So we'll keep everyone posted about what happens next, what the next steps are. Also, we talked about letting residents and parents know when there's going to be construction that will obstruct the walk to and from school or even the ride to and from school with roadwork. And the recommendation from the township committee was to go to nixle.com. So it's N-I-X-L-E dot com. And you can get updates texted to you when there's going to be roadwork. And I signed up and it's very helpful. I've already gotten a couple alerts. N-I-X-L dot com. N-I-X-L-E, thank you, dot com. And right now, when you sign up, you can only sign up for five zip codes. But they're going to have an update with the program and then you'll be able to do all seven. I believe it was seven that I wanted anyway. And so I only have five right now. But that's coming in the future. And then the last thing we discussed was we just shared our budgets with each other. No real standout from that. I mean, all of you have been to our budget meetings and, yeah. I don't know if Amy has anything else to add.
No, I thought it was good though that we were able to explain to them, you know, a small group, you know, some of the drivers of our budget and that they were able to share with us and drivers of their budget. I mean, everybody showed us a presentation that's up on their website and just having them walk through it and understanding that their revenue sources are a lot, a lot more varied than ours. And, you know, that they have a little more flexibility with some things than we have. And, you know, and also comparing some of our expenses and the major drivers, you know, and they gave everybody a better understanding of each other's operations and, you know, their, their increase in their rate, our increase in our rate, you know, sounds similar.
Yeah, it was a great discussion. It was a good meeting. And thanks to Pat Snell for coming to our meetings. And Mayor Perry was here earlier, he said, but I didn't, I didn't see him. So thank you. So moving on to our strategic planning. John, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add. This says my name, but.
No, I think just that the, I think you already sent out your application for May 1st meeting.
Yes, May 1st, we are interviewing.
The two candidates.
The two candidates for strategic planning coordinator. So that's exciting. So everybody come watch that on May 1st.
Are you taking that?
Yes, yes, it's a regular meeting, yes. Oh, yeah, it'll be on film to watch it, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, it's regular.
It's important. It's important to get as many members of the public involved as we can from the get-go. So anything anyone can do to help us, we really like that. Moving on to, that's the personnel. So, old business.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. An update on the solar panels? I mean, the only update we have right now is that we're monitoring the, you know, we're starting to see the changes in the bills.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry?
Our roofs.
I mean, we have, you know, we've been battling over the course of the fall and winter, you know, various leaks in buildings. We've been weekly meeting with the facilities department, the temp walls and his staff are, are looking at those. You know, we have, you know, and we did speak about that they're making some repairs over at Thompson's who fix some leaks over there, which require us to remove some of the panels. But those are, you know, that's being remedied and those are gonna go back on. And, you know, everybody's worked here on that. But we've, it's just been very wet. So we've been, you know, with a variety of groups, you know, we made a couple repairs, but.
I just wanted, we haven't heard of these back.
Oh, yeah.
Look them up there, but like, maybe saying you're seeing some different.
Hopefully by, you know, by the year end. I mean, we, we really just got the panels up and running at the end of, like, December, like, November, December. So now that we're going into April and, you know, we'll start to see even more power being generated. And, you know, I'm hoping by June 30th we'll have like, it was a good six months worth of activities to see. But, you know, we are seeing, we are seeing movement.
Good, that's what I was, that's what was supposed to be. Yes.
Great.
And that's, yeah, old business there. Last month's, last meeting, I was a little hectic and it was hard to follow what we were even booking on. So I left out a comment that I wanted to say at the end. And it was for someone who retired, Jerry Mahoney at high school north. She put in thirty-eight years of service and I can't imagine high school north without her. She's incredible person. And I always run above and beyond. And I really just wanted to thank her and wish her a happy retirement because as long as I've been involved, she's benefited here.
Well, she, she actually recorded our board meetings.
She recorded our board meetings.
Yeah, so.
Before I was on the board, I was sitting in the back of the room and talked to them. But I just want, I can, you know, I felt bad that we missed it but it was a little confusing at the last meeting at the end and noisy. And, you know, I just wanted to make sure that I got that out to her. Also, it's been a month of plays. I attended Thompson's, Mary Poppins, incredible, incredible play. Kids did a great job. I also went to Thorn and saw Shrek, really good, nice play. High school north, we were here for Do You Wanna Dance? And today, I got to attend West Side Story at high school south. And if you haven't, you know, if you have no plans this weekend, you really need to get there because this play was spectacular. The choreography in that play, oh my God, it was incredible. The talent, the voices, the songs, the director, incredible, incredible play. Don't miss out on it. It's there, it's on tomorrow night, Friday night, and Saturday. So don't miss it because it's better than going to a Broadway play. Kids did great stuff.
Thank you, that's awesome.
And then I want more, old business. I wanted to know where we are with our legislative committee because are we starting to bring people in so that we can teach our community how to lobby for the things that we need? Like, you see in Trenton with all the funding stuff, there's fans going out and they're, they're going to the hearings, they're going to the, to lobby outside. I know that was one of our goals, that we were gonna try to get our community involved. So I just wondered where we are with that. Have we started or is it gonna work?
What I can be doing. Is on a daily, on a daily basis, monitoring activities in Trenton that directly or tangentially relate to education. And I will be putting together for the board and the committee a summary of anything that's pending, either in front of the assembly or on the senate floor, which has anything to do with education, all right? As far as teaching people how to lobby goes, that was not really my intention as chair of the legislative committee. But I do have conversations from time to time with people in Trenton about educational activities, especially the funding formula. And I've talked to Dr. George and I think we're making some progress. We are going in the right direction.
But it was my understanding, and I think you and I had the conversation at a meeting, that we were gonna use our parents to help us lobby, to help us maybe try to get some of our funding back after voices hurt. So that's not part of the legislative committee?
We have not, we have not, we have not started in that direction.
Are we going to? Is it, is, or is it just following the bills and keeping the board updated?
I think following the bills and keeping the board updated and keeping the public updated. I mean, you can write, you can call.
Yeah, I mean, I write, I call.
Yeah, but that's, that's good, but we, we said we were gonna try to engage our community in this process because they're always saying, what can we do, what can we do? And we even talked about using the Guard State Coalition maybe to come in and meet with our parents and, and, you know, give them ideas on how to lobby and how to do things like that. So I really thought the whole purpose of the committee was to involve the community.
No, the whole purpose of the committee, the whole purpose of the committee, I believe, was to keep the Board of Education informed as to pending legislation in Trenton or trends going on in Trenton, which impacted education.
We've got a whole different meaning of that. I think the community involvement is what's gonna help us. And the public has been asking us for quite a few years to be involved in that. What can we do? What can we do? We always hit them at a crisis, hey, we lost seven million dollars. It's too late for them to help us lobby for it. I thought it was to educate them.
You can lobby by calling Joan. You can, and you can lobby by writing a letter. It is just as effective as it is standing outside of one of those buildings in Trenton.
Personally, I think we're letting the, the community down because getting them involved is something that we're ready to do.
Well, we're, we can keep them informed as to what's going on and then they can contact their senator and their assembly representatives.
Tom, but what I think, what I think we're trying to get out is that, like, if you don't tell me, make sure you write this letter, like, you know how they send out those reform letters? Give us the address. If you don't give it to us, we don't know enough to do it.
Understood.
That's what we're saying. Now that we wanna, I don't wanna go stand there. I'm not looking to go down the bus for them.
Right.
I'm just looking to let everybody know and the more in numbers, right? It makes a difference.
There's an assembly number, there's an assembly bill number, there's a senate bill number.
Right, I don't know.
Right, but let me just tell you that there are efforts within the schools and especially within the NJEA to lobby Trenton. As a matter of fact, when I was at the new mom and PTA and PFA meeting recently, there were postcards going around and people putting down their names and addresses. So there is actually a lot of activity that's already going on.
Yeah, we don't know.
It's been starting.
I didn't know. That's why I'm asking you, you want, like, I don't know. Maybe my one vote doesn't mean it. I won't call my business. I wanna help. I just, whatever you do is let us know.
Well, I'm not, I didn't do that, but.
Yeah, we haven't met together, but we did discuss it and we will do it in the future. I know what you guys are talking about. I remember discussing it. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we will talk about that.
If I could do, I'd just like to point out two things that I, and the public, what is, relates to us, really the drivers in that as to the bill and the funding and what the significant issue is for us, which is the decrease of enrollment. And then, Harry, that we're really focused on. The public on that also included the board and my direct correspondences with legislators. So we've been, we have reached out as a committee to, um, both, the assembly and the senate, to legislators directly. Debbie has come down to Trenton with me. On top of that, I also, as I informed the board and the public at the last meeting, also testified at the senate budget hearing last month as well. So, you know, we're focused on two main issues in our direct correspondence, the mental health issues as it relates to suicide prevention. I've also reached out to the commissioner and he's responded back to us. Had meetings with Senator Sweeney. I shared the correspondence from him as well. So, you know, we're building on those things. And one, another thing to your point, which I think is a really good point. I also, in, in going to, I shared exactly what my testimony was, but I'm also gonna put that out again. I think we find sometimes the more times we communicate it. So I plan to do that in a blog post in the next couple of weeks. We just kind of wanted to let a little bit of time go by and then come back and revisit that and also share that on social media as well, that, that blog post and put it up on the website. So those are just a couple of things that I communicated, talked with Deb and Tom about from my end. But I, but I understand, to your point, you know, it's gotta be a coordinated effort. But I also have to say, being down there at that senate budget hearing, there's a perception in the way we interacted, my communication when, with the state senate budget committee, which was a very positive, open interaction. And the perception when they feel like their backs against the wall because you're publicly lobbying their what, for example.
I'm not looking down there and batter, I'm not looking at, I'm just saying from the back, if it's letters you need, if it's signatures you need or phone calls.
That is, I'm helping. You're down there, you're down there. We heard your speech for special education, but I would guarantee you that some of our special education parents would love to follow that up with the letter. What can they do to help your statement?
That's what we want, isn't it?
Not what we want.
Okay.
I don't wanna look down.
There's plenty of things that we could use our community to, to help us get our point across.
That's good, because as I prepare the blog and that communication and then I can also share that with parent information committee in the future. Just some, the, the real points that we need to hit on as it relates to that, to that funding. So that, that's good dialogue, thanks.
Especially special education. We've been here for years.
We're welcome.
People want to know where the money's going, how it's being tracked. And this is what we're trying to accomplish.
And if we have a template, we can make sure that it's, you know, this template letter is respectable. Right, so you don't want people just writing and saying awful things.
Good, okay. I, I wanna, just a quick shout out on that. Declan O'Scanlon, Senator Thompson, that, the dialogue from them was really good. Senator Sweeney, you know, in, in my communication with Deb and Tom, you know, their thought, point was, and for me as a focus, is really make sure we're reaching out on both sides of the aisle and we're really purposely trying to do that. And I too have had communications quite frequently with Senator O'Paw and they have been very positive.
I just have a quick update on an old business item. It was asked of us to improve our communication and our advertisement of student events related to the arts. So thank you, Mrs. Middleies, for bringing up the shows. If you go to the district website, right now, it's located under the curriculum and instruction tab. And I encourage all parents to utilize it as well. It's the last item that will pop up in the list of additional links under curriculum instruction. It's called the Arts Happening page. There, there is a link to all of our arts instructors and teachers. And there is a complete list, it's being actively updated each day with all of the events that are happening in the district at every school. And many of them include descriptions of those events. district at every school, with, and many of them include descriptions of those events as well. So plays, chorus concerts, band concerts, any musicals, exhibits, the teachers are uploading all of those events district-wide. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. I went to River Plaza, one of my adopted schools, and they were doing What's Out There? It's a mobile planetarium. It was really wonderful. And Ocean Avenue School, my other adopted school, is planning for their fifth grade event, and having all sorts of fundraisers, so they're doing a great job, both schools. Proud of them.
Now, one other thing, New Monmouth had Science Night last week, it was very well attended, that's all I can say. It was very well attended, and I saw a lot of exploding volcanoes and...
Great experiments. I know, and it was open for, it was open to all K-5 students, so you're lucky. I have an abundance of...
I don't know what's good.
Wake up!
My ability to project is like, my only thing, I'm really good at, I have a really loud voice, so...
Oh, thanks.
I auditioned for it. Okay.
All right. Anyone else have new business? Okay. So at this time, I'd like to open up to public comment. I'm just going to read the guidelines for public comment, I think they're important. Please remember, this is a public meeting. Anything you say will be a public record. As a result pursuant to the law, the Board of Education cannot respond to you publicly concerning certain matters, such as those regarding an individual student. If there is a matter that you wish to remain private concerning personnel or students, please contact the superintendent's office. Public comment periods shall also be governed by the following rules. One, a participant must be recognized by the board president or presiding officer, and must preface comments by an announcement of his or her name, address, or municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable, sorry. Number two, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes duration. Number three, no participant may speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak have been heard. Number four, all statements, questions, or inquiries shall be directed to the board president, and any questions or inquiries directed by a participant to another board member shall be redirected to determine if such statement, question, or inquiry shall be addressed on behalf of the board or by the individual board member. And number five, questions requiring investigation shall be referred by the board to the superintendent's office for consideration and later response. A participant may be asked to submit such questions in a written format. So those are all the rules. And we've actually, we are going to be amending the policy to go to five minutes, and we have a small group, we're just not there right now, so for now, it's three.
Okay. You're thinking, Middletown. Just real quickly, speaking about preparing your blog, I just want to make sure, from perception perspective, and I do not think it is the intent of the board or you, Dr. George, but I think some people reading some of the quotes about the increased cost of special ed, some of us have gotten questions or comments, you know, special ed kids are throwing our budget over the edge, sort of thing, where I think you're talking about the state policy of funding them. So I just want to make sure that when you're doing the blog, that it's not kind of hitting families or different groups against each other, because I understand what you're doing, and I appreciate what you're doing, but when some people just read 26%, 27% increase and copy, you know, we don't know from when, what you're talking about, that's not year on year. You're talking about the state funding formula, not, I just want to make sure that people understand, it's not causing the budget deficit. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, actually, we weren't really clear on what we said, and exact from the NSA report of 2011.
Yeah.
But to your point, the other point that we really hit on is that special education, extraordinary aid funding, and the overall cost of special education are the only dollars that don't follow the student. So remember, we talked about Title I, as part of my conversation with that, we talked about, like, Title I, ESL, ELL...
But, but a lot of people don't understand all this.
Yeah, so, we'll continue to do that.
I just want to make sure that you're aware that there might be a perception, and I know that's not the intent. The other point I had, if I could ask respectfully, that the policy on accepting email as a form of notice be looked at, as we talk about future-ready. As far as I know, it might have changed, but it hasn't been announced. As of now, we have to use paper copies for everything to provide notice. So, example, if you file something with the state, the state will accept the email, but then you've got to print it, either go to the, mail it certified, or take time off from where it can go to the district and have it stamped that it's been received. It's kind of a hardship on parents. And, and I think on livelier things, I mean, technically, every response I give to an IP, I believe I should be handing a hard copy, and sometimes I do, and get it signed at the office, but I believe our policy does not require email as a form of notice, and I just think that would be very helpful to parents if that could be looked at.
Thank you.
And...
Your time's up.
I hope you stayed your professional.
We can answer our own, yeah.
So anybody else would like to come up?
Good evening, Leo Christofli, Middletown. Put two paper articles, we had very hard press. The pages are there, if you'll look down, and the dates. The first one, New Jersey Needs Benefits Parity. I'm more interested in the play of contributions from employees in this school district versus benefits. This article indicates that school boards seem to concentrate on the benefits of personnel and employees. So enough said there, except that the general, it doesn't apply to Middletown, but there's a statement that the taxpayers pay 90% of the coverage currently on medical matters. So that means that the contribution, not here, but this is a general thing, and state that is a 3% contribution. Lastly, I was very smitten with Superintendent George's presentation before the assembly and the senate. He got specifically into it. May I ask panel on the, a question to Superintendent George?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Do you have any, as a, as a petitioner, do you have any proposal that they meet? If necessary, make regulations, if necessary, make legislation in the assembly and in the senate to make up this inverse ratio that works at a great, great disadvantage in the area of special education?
Yes, Mrs. Wright and I went down and testified, attraining for a bill in the senate by the minority caucus, the Republicans. However, based on a lot of communication, I don't know, because it's in a minority bill, whether or not it has legs, but I do know that there was representatives from Senator Sweeney's office that were there that day, and there's been a lot of communication between both sides of the aisle about maybe crafting a new bill that represents, that represents both sides of the aisle. And that's been a lot of our discussion. And I think Tom brought up a good point, Mr. GIML brought up a good point, talking about us not, not just talking directly to our legislators, but I've been communicating with superintendents, like my good friend, Dr. Salvatore in Long Branch, who Vingo Powell represents, and I know there has been communication, dialogue between, with him, with Vingo Powell. So what we're trying to do across the state, also with, I've gone to statewide, support our students, meetings where we had discussions with legislators on both sides of the aisle across the state. So what we're trying to do is build capacity and support across the state for a, if not this bill, for a follow-up bill that would represent both sides.
Good, thank you very much. Good job, I think.
Thank you.
I agree with Leo. Good job. Thank you. Anybody else want to come to the mic? All right. Seeing nobody come to the mic, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Discussion, all in favor, opposed, against.
Thank you to everyone.
Thank you.